All right. Well, hey guys, welcome back to the Good Stuff Podcast. Thanks for joining us. Hopefully you've watched some of our previous content. If not, welcome. This is where I like to talk about the good stuff going on here in Marysville, Ohio. My name is Derek Schwin. I'm a local real estate professional and community enthusiast who loves talking about this stuff. And today, we've got this gentleman who's been kind enough to join me and chat with me. So, thanks for being here, sir.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you so much for the invitation.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
My name is Hank Burby. I've been a resident of Marysville for about forty-two years. But this year happens to be my anniversary year of coming to Marysville, which was fifty years ago. So, I've seen Marysville grow from about five thousand people fifty years ago to close to about thirty thousand maybe by the end of the year or otherwise early next year.
I think I've been here for a while, and I've only been here for thirty-two years or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how big the population was when I started out here, but I don't think it was five thousand. So, I'm sure compared to fifty years ago, it's...
Well, we often chuckle about it because at that time, if your name was not Blooming Shyne, or Lausch, or some of the other...
Nickel Leaper, yeah.
Nicholson, you still remember some of those. I often say you were tolerated, but it took a long time to get accepted, so.
And I have even heard that recently. People say it's hard to become a... or not be an outsider, to become, I guess, an insider. And, which, you know, for me, that's in the conversation of growth in the community. That's... I like that small-town aspect of it.
Yeah. And, but there are many ways that we have been able to do it. Going through my early years of living here, I sent my children, Bob and Marjolaine, went to school. I was known as Bob and Marjolaine's dad. Then, as they became older and my wife became more active in the community, especially as a volunteer with Memorial Hospital, I was always known as Maryanne's husband. And it really wasn't until I got into City Council that people knew who I was, because I was always somebody else's dad or husband.
I think that sounds like my dad. He was very similar. You were the boy's dad, or, yep, Linda's husband. Yeah, that's definitely the case for him, too. And so, you've been involved, so for those that don't know, you've been on council, you said a minute ago, for about sixteen years, right?
This is my sixteenth year, yes. Yeah.
So, you've got the most tenure by a little bit, don't you?
Actually, Mark, he's well into his twenty-plus years.
Oh, really? I had no idea. No offense, Mark. I didn't know.
He's been the longest on council.
Okay. Well, good for him. Well, both of you, thank you for your service.
Okay, you're welcome. You're welcome.
So, the main thing I wanted to chat with Hank about, and just in general on these podcasts, is just kind of the state of the community, what's going on, some of the good stuff. But, growth and whatnot. And I know that's a hot topic, and we were just talking about TIFs and many different things. And obviously, you've got a lot of experience and a lot of the details. What do you think are the most important factors going on with our community these days?
Definitely growth, because with growth, we can expect potentially more industry coming to Marysville. So, but of course, to be able to do housing, and then your traffic congestion and everything. It seems at times for people to get overwhelming, yeah. But slowly but surely, it usually takes about five to ten years for the city to catch up when, if and when there is a problem that needs to be solved.
So, be patient, is what you're saying?
Be patient, yes. Yeah, be patient.
So, all the people yelling for Target and all the different conveniences, just wait?
Unfortunately, when you're talking about Target, and then with Kohl, or some of the other ones, as the Amazons, as the other companies are now doing such a fantastic job on delivery, on hand-delivery, not having to drive ten, fifteen miles, it's going to be very difficult for a brick-and-mortar business to come in and stay here for a long time.
Questions?
Yeah, and of course, we could also see it locally up here, that Big Lots is going to close their store as well.
Yeah, and I've heard more of folks selling on social media, which is quite an interesting thing. But...
Yes.
To add to that, that's only making the problem worse for brick-and-mortar.
Yes, yeah. It keeps it as a challenge. And the one thing that I do suspect that we can expect more of is going to be companies that have found their niche into the service market. But as far as selling in conventional retail, that's going to be difficult, not only in Marysville, but pretty much every place.
What do you think about, like, Mom and Pop's type of brick-and-mortar? Like, is there enough of a niche there?
If it is the right product, it can work, yeah. But unfortunately, with the recent closing of some of the stores, it continues to be a challenge. And especially if it is a new build versus an existing. Just to give you an idea, in Uptown Marysville, you can rent a store that you can operate out of somewhere in the neighborhood of seven fifty, eight hundred dollars a month. Yeah. If you go to a new build, then you can expect for ten thousand square feet, forty dollars per square foot, that's almost forty thousand per year. Yeah, so, that would be almost like a professional, whether it be a medical office, dentist, attorney, accountant, that would be more the service industry rather than retail sales.
Or restaurant?
Or restaurant, yes, yeah.
Both are a struggle.
Yes.
Indeed. So, the big hot topic on, what is today? I forget. The ninth are we on already? Sixth. I'm ahead of time. The sixth. I read an article this morning about Amazon. Probably the biggest one to transition over to that and all that that's gonna bring. There's lots of curiosity there.
Okay, well, Amazon has many different operations. Yeah, of course, it started out with book sales, excuse me. It started out with book sales, then it started to add other items onto it, and then it continued to branch out. And as technology evolved, there was a, and there is a continual bigger need for something that's known in the industry as data centers. Yeah, because each of us that carry a phone around, we are only really a portal between the information that we want, but the information is not necessarily stored in our phone, but we have to go electronically to a data center. And that's why we see so many data centers pop up all over the, not only the United States, but all over the world.
Mm-hmm. And I always think it's funny, it's not really the cloud, they're actually on the ground.
They're actually on the ground, yes.
Which is fairly obvious, but...
So, we've already looked into this on council for about two years. Yeah, so it didn't come as a surprise to us.
Well-thought-out.
We, yeah, because this, the investment that they're making, which could be north of one billion dollars, yeah, which is a thousand million, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money. So, the buildings themselves are going to be in the neighborhood of about two hundred fifty million. What they put into the building, that is the biggest chunk. And that's all computer, and that's all computer storage. Yeah, so, the one where I did see the drawing, and having been somewhat, having become somewhat familiar with what the industry is all about, I really liked the approach that they are taking on this particular property. So, it is going to be over at what we call Innovation Park. It is, they're committing to fifty-five acres. And under fifty-five acres, they're going to build two roughly two hundred fifty thousand square-foot buildings for a total of about half a million square foot. And the reason that they make two buildings, from what we can speculate on, because they obviously don't tell us all the details, is that the building, the building that they're building is structurally so heavy and sound, yeah, with the floor itself being maybe two or three feet big, to make sure that there is no vibration, should there be, heaven forbid, an earthquake, that it keeps everything going. The building has to be fairly tall to keep the heat away from what the computers generate. And so, the building is very secure, but what goes in, and that is technology, and most of the technology you get maybe five, seven, or maybe ten years at most out of it. Now, the initial buildings that they, they've been doing, they've been doing data centers now for about twenty years. And the first buildings only were occupied for ten years, then they guarded them, and then they reused them and repurposed them. Nowadays, they want to be able to guard them and then replace them with new equipment going into that same building. So, that's why making two separate buildings, that means that they can consistently stay online. If they have to repurpose one building, then they could switch over to the other building. And then, once the new computers are installed, then they can repurpose the other building.
So, in theory, one building is able to run the capacity that's required?
Yes, yeah.
And so, in the meantime, when they're not repairing anything, are both used?
Again, they don't share that information. But just, just, just keep in mind, yeah, that in central Ohio alone, yeah, this is here in the Columbus area, there are a hundred and seven data centers. They all have different sizes, and I have no doubt that if one gets close to capacity, that they will automatically switch over to another one. So, maybe they are both fully used. If a third one that needs to be repurposed, that they use them both, I mean, there is no doubt a continuous stream of information that needs to be put into those units.
So, I assume this is a long-term visioning. If there's fifty-five acres, so I assume they're acquiring, buying the fifty-five acres?
They are buying the fifty-five acres, yes.
And so, if it's two buildings at two hundred fifty thousand square feet, acres forty-three, five sixty, that's roughly eleven point four acres, so there's forty-five acres left over, so that's for future expansion or opportunities?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I was gonna say, that's not a very big footprint on fifty-five acres.
Yes, yeah.
But for growth, that makes perfect sense of...
Yeah, to be able to grow at some point in time in the future, yeah.
So, in the news, I mean, I read, I think last night was the first time I saw it, and then there was, I think, something else I saw today, and I've already talked to a few people that said, "Oh, is that the building that's going on right now?"
No, that's not...
I don't think it goes that quick. So, is that E's Logistics expanding?
No, this is actually a speculation building. We only know it by the term that we use internally as Opus. And it is an investment company from the West Coast that does see an opportunity here for a larger spec building. Yeah, so, they bought eighteen acres, and the building itself is probably going to be close to maybe ten acres, and then parking, loading docks, and everything else. And, but, we don't know yet if they have a tenant, yeah, but that is for, for that particular company, a spec building, as an investor, that they want to capitalize on current costs for materials, and they do anticipate. Unfortunately, the other building that you also see over there, which is a shared space building, that would be the Hardy World. Yeah, that's also out there. And those are three one-acre increments. And they are, they almost weekly get an inquiry for it, but nobody's been able to pull the trigger yet on that particular one. Yeah, so, we have, and then, a little bit further down the road, on the west side, we have the, what we call Pioneer Building, which is five to ten thousand square-feet increments. So, we have five to ten for the smaller businesses. We have one acre for the larger businesses, or we, in the future, have ten acres for the mega businesses.
Just processing, so, the building we're in now is a similar concept, except it's three thousand square feet, fifteen hundred square feet, at least this strip here.
Because it's done for retail, yes.
Just a little more different, and so, just thinking, I'm assuming these are fifteen, twenty-year-old building that we're in right now. Just interesting the progression now that they're offering a lot bigger, and it just kind of speaks to the scale of obviously what's going on in the businesses and whatnot.
But, I know that we did get sidetracked a little bit on the size and what Amazon is going to mean for Marysville. Now, for the city of Marysville, it's a very minor, it's on a very minor scope. You would expect that if you have a one-billion-dollar investment, that that would really flourish the city of Marysville. That is not what's going to happen. Yeah. Why council wants to continue and move forward with this is that it's going to benefit the community as a whole. Yeah, because when Amazon came, they, one of the first things that they did ask for, and, you know, you're familiar with the dreaded word TIF, Tax Incentive Financing, which normally is for retail or for consumer apartments and single-family homes, plant unit development, so-called PUDs, that's one thing. And for businesses, we use the word abatement. And historically, we have given businesses a ten-year, seventy-five percent abatement. And an abatement means that you don't have to pay right from the get-go the full amount of taxes that you would normally have to pay, the real estate taxes on your building. But for a ten-year ramp-up period, we will give you a seventy-five percent abatement. That gives your business a chance. Now, usually in the third or fourth year, yeah, and currently, we have, by the way, about fifteen businesses in Union County that have an abatement. Yeah, so, and we, every year, so, the abatement is based on the number of employees, yeah, is based on the income tax that we get out of that business. If they don't meet those goals, then they're going to go under a so-called watch, and they have to put in a corrective action plan. And then, they have two more years, and, but if they are not able to meet the amount of payroll or the number of employees, then we will just basically say, "Hey, you've had six years, that should have been enough for you to get on full speed." So, and we have had instances where we had to tell people or businesses, "Sorry, but after six years," that's normally about the limit, "that we would say, 'Sorry, but we cannot give you an abatement for the last four years, because you have not been able to meet the criteria.'"
Yeah, I had no idea that was part of that.
Yeah.
Makes perfect sense, though.
It does make sense. You could ask for it, but if you don't deliver, and you don't see the potential of delivering, then we would just have to say, "Sorry, we've tried, you tried. We'd love to have you here, but we can no longer extend the abatement to you."
Well, it's a great opportunity to support people trying to do something and...
Yes.
And building something. And obviously, at the start, it's always hard, and...
Now, when Amazon came in, they, and they learned that by building as many as a hundred of those kind of data centers, they came in and they said, "We want a thirty-year, one-hundred percent abatement. That means for thirty years, we are not paying any taxes."
So, just to pause for a second. So, when somebody hears seventy-five percent abatement, a hundred percent abatement, is that applied to any of their taxes?
That...
Real estate income, like?
No, that will be applied to the real estate tax.
So, that's the real estate?
That is the real estate, yeah.
Make sure...
Yeah. Well, as you may be familiar, there are three forms of taxation. Yeah, so, if you look at the city of Marysville, the city of Marysville gets the majority of their income from the one-and-a-half percent income tax. So, if you live here or you work here, you get a withholding of one-and-a-half percent. So, that's the city of Marysville.
Okay.
Then, we have the real estate tax, and the real estate tax goes to many of the county functions. So, the real estate tax, sixty-three percent goes to the school. So, that goes to pay for many of the school expenses. Then, there is developmentally disabled, yeah, which is, we know it better as the Herod-Lewis School. There is the Health Department, there is the library, there is nine-one-one, and there are two or three other ones. And that's where the real estate tax goes to.
At least they're supposed to. I just didn't throw that in there.
Okay. That is, that's how it should go. Then, when you look at the county, the county gets the money from the sales tax. Okay? So, the sales tax, the seven percent, yeah, is collected by the state, and they pay back to the, to the county. So, that's how the income, that's how the various entities, so, and then, of course, your sales tax pays for the maintenance, the road maintenance in the county, pays for the sheriff, pays for all of the other expenses that the county has. Yeah, so, that's what sales tax stands for.
That's awful.
Yeah. So, each of them, so, if you try to stay in your own lane, and that's where a number of years ago, when we were not able to fulfill the requirement, that's why the extended TIF, and that's how we were able to pay for the sewer plant, yeah, by using TIF money to pay down the debt on the sewer plant. Yeah. But to get back to, to get back to...
Amazon asking for their big abatement?
Well, to the big abatement. So, first thing we said, "Paul, what, what, what do you propose?" And they said, "Well, it's standard to do a payment in lieu of taxes." Okay, so, since we don't pay any real estate tax, we are still willing to pay the equivalent amount, and that term is called a pilot payment. Yeah, so, pilot is the acronym for payment in lieu of taxes.
That was one question I had. That makes, are we just robbing Peter to pay Paul? I'm not sure the benefit, like, what the purpose of that is.
Okay, so, here is the reason that, that, that the school signed up on that one, because, again, the school would be the biggest driver. But the city, it basically didn't make any difference whether we give an abatement or not, because we don't get any income, we don't, we only get income tax money anyway.
And there's not much income there.
And there is not much income. When it comes to the real estate tax, that is money that would go to the school. So, what, what the agreement that the school made with Amazon, yeah, is that they would get the equivalent, which is a million dollars per year in real estate tax, over the next thirty years. So, the school is committed to get thirty million dollars, yeah, over the next thirty years. The, and the reason why, I believe, and again, this is speculation on my side, but follow me on that one, yeah, is that if you now get a million dollars, five years from now, if there were additional levies, you could anticipate that real estate tax not to be a million, but you would expect it to be one-point-one million, one-point-two million. By now, upfront, signing on for a pilot program, then you are assured that whatever increase in value, yeah, you don't have to deal with it, because you're going to keep paying that one million dollars, and you're not paying the increase in value.
Especially if they build additional buildings.
Yes, all of that.
It's kind of like when you buy a house, you lock in your living expense from a housing standpoint for thirty years with your mortgage versus rent increases, same idea.
However, okay, and here is where you go into the negotiations. And so, the school said, "Well, thirty million dollars is nice, yeah. Long-term, we probably would get more, but we want to change this one around, and we want you to give us two million per year for the next fifteen years." Okay? So, again, that's where the negotiation keeps going back and forth and back and forth.
Of course.
For, in order for the school to sign off, so, the school did get an agreement with Amazon, that they are going to pay two million per year...
Oh, they did.
For the next fifteen years. Okay? So, because then, fifteen years from now, well, we don't have a track record with data. I mentioned earlier, they've been around for ten, twelve, fifteen years. Many of them, yeah, have been repurposed. So, I think it was a good negotiation from the school, yeah, to say, "Let's do this for fifteen years. We get the same amount of money, and then after fifteen years, yeah, we would not get the money." However, yeah...
Something, open things back up for negotiation theoretically and...
Exactly.
Put it back on the table, rather than, it's similar to the solar panels or solar farms. I've heard people, you know, with our farm, people approaching us, and, "Okay, thirty-five, I think it was a thirty-five-year lease at one point." That sounds great.
Yes, uh-huh.
But if it runs, if the well runs dry...
If the well runs dry.
And you're stuck with solar panels in a field that you gotta deal with.
So, so, when you're looking at, at a property, yeah, and you're looking at wanting to get abatements and wanting to get, wanting to get money coming in, yeah, and you're looking at the school, yeah, so, at the end of the day, I, this upcoming Monday, I'll be going to get an opportunity to, for the citizens to ask questions, for council to ask questions. Yeah, but in the, in a nutshell, all of those details have been, and that, and on such a scale, that easily takes a year to a year and a half before all parties come together to find something that will fit for every, every application. Yeah, the, so, for us as a city, if they build it or not build it, we can expect maybe initially, we can expect maybe a hundred, hundred fifty thousand that we, that we as a city get out of it.
As a revenue standpoint?
Yes, yeah, for the city. But if we look at the community as a whole, it's something that I don't think we should pass up.
So, that was gonna be my question. As a whole, we are lucky as a community to get the Amazon opportunity, you'd say?
I believe so, yes.
But if it, if it fell apart, it wouldn't be the end of the world at the same time?
It would not be the end of the world. The only thing of it is that, how much auxiliary income are we going to get out of this? Because if you're building a two-hundred fifty million-dollar building, the building itself, yeah, how much income tax do you, can we expect out of that just to build it? Yeah, so, it's going to require X number of people to work out there, and those people will be paying income tax. So, we...
But for that short term?
That would be, that would be more of a short term, yeah. But, and we don't know if there are auxiliary companies, yeah, companies that, well, of course, the other, the other thing that we as a city can expect the benefit from is... the other thing that we as a city can expect the benefit from is that uh, we had initially, when they built the old, um, when they built the old uh, data centers, um, the water supplier to cool the equipment had to commit, and that's what we started with two years ago as well, that we had to commit to five hundred thousand gallons of water per day in order to cool down the buildings. And we said, well, we cannot make that commitment, because uh, that means that we would have to make bigger investments, and we don't have two hundred fifty um, thousand gallons of water, sorry, five hundred thousand gallons of water available for you. So um, they said, well, then we would have to put in more electronic, and that means that we would have to um, use more electricity to cool down and keep the computers at the temperature that's doable, and they 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 chose for that model. So they will be more.
Okay, I wonder.
Air cold rather than water cold.
Yeah, I knew that was an issue of the water at one point, and I, it seems, it seems like a a simple question that must, maybe it's not an intelligent question to ask, but I I've heard that before, that water is such an issue. If it's being used as a heat transfer, why, is there a, do you know if there's a reason they can't just recirculate the water?
Um.
It seems like that's a lot of water, just a.
That 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 is a lot of water, but then evidently um, uh, to store the water, cool down the water, yeah, that, whether it's unsightly or whether there is maintenance on that, yeah, you almost would have to build your own, uh, whether whether you can use um, um, whether you could put in a pond and pull that water out. There are a lot of, there are a lot of different issues that they probably have to look at whether they have to use clean water.
It seems like that'd be a whole lot easier or cheaper than buying five hundred thousand gallons every day.
I I I agree with you, but.
And I'm the type to do it myself and put it, you know, take care of it myself, so maybe that's just.
Yep.
That's in my nature, but that seems like an obvious.
Mm hmm, that, yes.
Especially if you have fifty five acres.
I can only, I can only, um, I can only guess that people that are able to put that together would have figured that one out.
Ah, that's why I said, it seems like a stupid question, but it seems obvious.
Seems obvious.
I don't know, but whatever. So what are other big things that you think are going on that um, are gonna affect, like, this obviously is gonna be a, a good, good win for the schools, and it's gonna, it'll be interesting, I haven't really thought too much about how that's gonna affect the levy coming up and.
Short term, yeah, you um, I I still think that the levy is going to need to be where it is at the moment, so this will help in in the long run, but I, to to see a completion date, I would imagine at least two to three years out before you could actually see a building um, up and running, uh, fully installed and everything, yeah.
And so from a, from a um, pilot payment, when would those start?
Um, I.
Theoretically.
I um, I have not asked that question, that's not the questions that I would ask. I can only imagine, once the building itself is completed, that that's when it.
I would assume that's when the improvements taking place on the ground, that's when the.
Yeah, uh huh.
Value would change.
Yeah, and I don't know if it is, if you, if you have a start point, and then six months later, you pay a higher amount, a year later, you pay a higher amount, I can only, I can only speculate.
Some of that.
That's how it's gonna go.
Okay, uh, yeah, and I was just thinking, you know, hopefully people don't hear, oh, the the schools are gonna get a lot of money, we don't need to vote for the levy, that's, that's not the case.
That, that's not the case, yeah, that's not the case.
Yeah, hopefully that that narrative doesn't perpetuate itself.
So the other things, of course, um, uh, we are dealing also with what what is known as Marysville South, yeah, uh, we have Marysville East, and pretty soon we will be introduced to Marysville North. So those are three different separate items. Marysville South is going to be mainly industrial, yeah, so that's if you think of thirty three, between thirty three and um, and Weaver Road, yeah, there is six hundred acres. Um, it 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 is very likely, yeah, that that will be developed at some point in time, but it's more likely that the property that's on the east side of thirty three, that's about six hundred acres, that that will be more of a conventional um, industrial site. Yeah, so that's um, uh, that's the one that we're going to put the first emphasis on as far as um, infrastructure. Now, that one, yeah, will be done in a different way, yeah, and that one will be what they call a community authority. Yeah, a community authority, yeah, which is um, um, for us, especially here in Marysville, a new term, but if you're familiar with Jerome Township.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, Jerome Township, all of the homes that they built out there, yeah, they are in a uh, community authority. So they don't have a TIF, they don't have an abatement, but they have a community authority. And a community authority, I refer to it frequently as a HOA on steroids. Yeah, so you self impose, yeah, to put maybe um, a seven, eight, eight mil on the value of your house, and that's what you're going to pay in order to put in the infrastructure for your own development. Yeah, so you're not robbing from Peter to pay Paul, you're not asking the residents of Marysville that have been here for twenty, thirty years, yeah, to help pay for the new development, but the new development will pay its own way, with their own community authority.
Sounds like a novel idea.
Um, it it is, and it is not, okay? And when you say it isn't, it it is not, so uh, they did this, or they have done this over at Jerome, okay, and um, the first homes that were sold, yeah, the um, real estate agents and the community knew about the um, uh, knew about the um, community authority or the self imposed, yeah, but then later on, people seem to forget about. Yeah, so, and.
Yeah.
And and that's one of the downsides that we have heard, and that's why, uh, if you think it's difficult here in Marysville to get a levy passed, it's even much harder over in Jerome, because Jerome is saying that, hey, we 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 already are paying fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars in real estate tax for our house, yeah, and they have a much harder time getting people convinced that a um, school levy is a good thing, while they are already taxed um, um, at at the, at the height that they are.
Yeah, that's very interesting, I didn't. Different places in town that have have been built with character, and they had a story to tell, I I've heard the same thing, that the story kind of gets forgotten and and the the spice kind of goes away, if you will, and it just kind of gets more mundane, I it makes sense that it would happen with this, that they've kind of forget about that, and, yeah, and then you get farther down the road and you don't, a school levy, and it it makes me think, you know, the the community and, you know, the powers that be, if you will, where where we take care of the old residents versus the new residents, the existing versus the new, and and that kind of speaks to some of those um, details and deals that are made, or way things are structured, obviously, as you said, are things to consider, because they don't just happen at one point in time, they.
Well, it 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 continues to evolve. If I look at the two thousand ten census, yeah, we had roughly about twelve hundred people sixty five and over in the city of Marysville, about twelve hundred, yeah. The twenty twenty, yeah, the number increased to almost three thousand.
I was gonna say, that's.
Sixty five and over.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is ten percent, or actually, at at that time, it was twelve percent of our population, or sixty five and over, yeah, they don't, because we we don't tax over social security, yeah, most of them are pension or whatnot, yeah, but yet, when it comes right down to it, that segment of the population is the biggest user of our fire department services, but we have no income coming in from that segment of the population. Yeah, so, and and as we continue, um, as an aging population, it is very important to keep that balance of having younger people coming in, that that are in the workforce, that are paying income tax, to be able to support the older generation that is, that has gotten us to where we are at the moment. Uh, so again, it it it's a, it's an, it's an evolving, and that's why I really, the numbers speak for themselves, yeah, as to um, what decisions we should make. And most of the decisions that we now make are for things that impact the community five to ten years from now.
Mm hmm, future proofing.
Yeah, we don't, we don't make short term decisions, but our decisions are mostly long term decisions.
So on that note, as a little bit of a side note, that is one thing, I I love reading social media comments about uh, opinions of what the city's done or hasn't done, and some maybe I kind of agree with, maybe I don't, but i- it's always uh, interesting, the ones that are phrased with with some sort of flavor of, what are they thinking? There's no reason for this, and and, you know, I I think it's not a very good position to come from, obviously, you guys are putting some thought into it, and just like you said, the the Amazon deal, that's been going on for two years, and their strategy, and especially with what you just said, that that the goal is five, ten, fifteen years, whatever, later.
Mm hmm.
That how are these these things going to be impacted? What, how, do you have any recommendations for people to, or where they can look to see some of, some evidence of of some forethought and like the comprehensive plans or?
Um, well, the the one, the one thing, the the one thing, the the very first time, and I go back now, uh, to two thousand nine, when um, I started on city council, yeah, we um, uh, I had, we had a council member that, uh, we were both on the finance committee, and the very first thing that he said, keep an open mind and study the subject. Yeah, and that has really resonated with me all those years that I've been on council. Yeah, I'm very slow to um, judge, yeah, because if I have not been able to study the subject, I cannot make a comment on it. And unfortunately, with social media, we frequently make a comment, while we don't know what's behind it. So I would say to any of those people, yeah, that um, um, I I'm, I'm, I'm impressed at the level of um, um, I'm impressed at the level of um, people that are in our leadership, yeah, I don't always agree with it, yeah, because we're coming from different, different sides of where the money uh, comes from, or how it should be spent.
Mm hmm.
But um, when it comes down to uh, learning and and knowing, most of, or almost all the decisions are very sound, yeah, and um, um, are to the benefit of the community.
And I was gonna add to that, with purpose.
With purpose, yeah.
But if, yeah, I mean, it's not, it just a lot of the comments sound like, there's no reason to do this, it's just spending money, well, you just might not agree with and have studied.
Yeah, and and as I explained earlier, yeah, where the three revenue sources are coming from, frequently, we hear, why does the city not help pay for the schools? Yeah, that that's, that's a, that's a common question that we get, yeah, and I purposely stay off of um, uh, social media, because it it's a no win situation, but then, um, if I was to comment, I would say, how would you feel that if we gave the money to um, uh, to support the school, and you would call nine one one, and there is nobody available for you to take care of an emergency, how would you feel about that one? Yeah, so that's, that's, and and that, that is um, a very important part. And actually, um, the one, one thing that I I would like to maybe add to this is my reasoning for going on city council, okay? So um, almost eighteen years ago, before um, before I was inclined to uh, go um, into what you might call public service, uh, the city of Marysville had a one percent income tax, and with the one percent, we could see the level of services going down in the city of Marysville. Yeah, we were always uh, short on um, on on um, firefighters in particular, well, safety services was a big issue, and we, the other thing that we were short on, yeah, is maintaining um, our streets. We did not, um, uh, as a matter of fact, a number of years earlier, uh, the city took out a four million dollar loan to do street, um, street improvement. Yeah, so when, at that time, it was Chris Smang, who was mayor, and she asked me to help with the campaign, and I told her, I said, well, if you're gonna ask me to help, then I'm going to have to eventually go on council to make sure the money is spent on what we're telling people. And we told people at that time, yeah, we need money to improve our safety services, and we need money to continue a very strong um, paving program. Yeah, those were the two, and it 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 finally took, took hold, and we did increase from one to one and a half percent. Uh, at that time, we had maybe um, what was it, twenty two thousand people living in Marysville, um, and we had a staff of about a hundred and eighty, moving forward to now having almost thirty thousand people, yeah, um, we, uh, our, our employee, um, our number of employees has increased um, to about two hundred and eighteen, and most of those did go to police and fire. Yeah, uh, another, another small statistic is that when I started, we had seventy two miles of roadway in the city of Marysville, seventy two miles, the streets and everything.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, we had seven employees in the street department, okay? Sixteen years later, we have, uh, we are, we are pushing to a hundred and ten. Yeah, so we have added new development, well, even look at professional parkway close by here, that's an almost two mile stretch. And so we we have um, in- increased the almost a hundred and ten miles, but we still have the same seven employees. We have not increased.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so uh.
I thought you were gonna say more, no.
No, no, we still have the same seven. Now, we use part timers in the summertime to do the mowing and whatnot, but our our core, our, the number of um, um, the number of um, employees, but our trucks, our equipment, um, we 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 now have twenty million dollars worth of new equipment, because I remember the first year before the one and a half percent kicked in, yeah, we had twelve uh, snowplows starting when there was a snow event, and at the end of the twenty four hours, only seven of them were still working, and five had failed.
Very good odds.
So we said, that's that, that's not, so we 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 spent a considerable amount of money on improvement, getting new equipment and and everything else. Yeah, and that's just, that is just um.
One department, yeah.
One, one department, yeah. Uh, the other one, and I'm sure as a Realtor, you can appreciate that, that when you go into a street and the street is well maintained, so a a normal, a normal street has, if it is a thorough fair, it has a twenty year life expectancy, if it is a cul-de-sac or a lesser used, it has a twenty five years. So that means that that we, we had to replace the paving, yeah, at the level of four percent per year.
To keep the rotation.
To keep the rotation going for twenty to twenty five years, yeah, and um, if you look at the street, um, that we recently had one, and uh, all of the um, the drains needed to be lifted up. So we had the storm department, they came, and they uh, raised all of the the drains that were along the street, yeah. Also, the um, ADA um, uh, forced, forced us to make all the entrances now accessible for handicapped. So we had the street department, and we do most of that work in-house, so we literally worked for four months on a street with different apartments, yeah, before we could even start grinding down and replacing the pavement. So it's almost like building a new street after twenty or twenty five years, and that that, that's where a lot of our income is going to. Yeah, we we have a paving budget, and it's in the neighborhood of about three and a half to four million dollars, yeah, just to keep Marysville at the level that we Uh just to keep Marysville at the level that we are. That's not even improving much of anything.
Just maintenance. Wow. Yeah, and and to me, that's again, just one one area of. Um, you know, that's one thing I think about the how the growth and development has affected the community and how it's changing. And that's one of many avenues that it's it's.
And 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 the other one, so the studies that we had done, yeah, is that a a single family home. In order in order to and and let's let's take some of them, yeah, that are now being sold for four hundred thousand dollars, yeah, which is. Which is not excessive high, not excessive low, yeah. In in order to live in a house like that, people would almost have to um have an income of roughly about a hundred and twenty thousand. Yeah, that's that's just speculation, but by but yeah, but that's about the level.
Good number.
Yeah, good number, okay. So um if if you're looking at a hundred and twenty times one and a half percent. Yeah, that's eighteen hundred dollars that goes to the city, okay? For us to maintain the level of service that people expect, which is fire. Yeah, which is police, which is paving, which is no removal. A particular house, when there are, say, two and a half houses per acre, costs the city twenty four hundred dollars. So we get eighteen hundred, but building new homes, building new homes is not profitable for the city. We have to do it, but every house that we built, yeah, so fortunately, yeah, we have and we have been very fortunate. That we have a lot of businesses that pay business income tax, yeah, and that's that that is what closes the gap. Yeah, because that's another thing that um people don't realize, but um if 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 you look at city of Marysville. Yeah, if 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 you were to take a guess of how many businesses we have or how many business filings we have in the city of Marysville. Can I?
I have no idea.
Can I put you to desk on that one?
Oh, that's gonna take.
Yeah.
Uh well, I'm trying, the first thing that comes to mind, how many like one person, mom and pop, out of their basement, businesses are there? That's probably a lot.
Yeah, so we do about eighteen hundred.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say fifteen.
About eighteen hundred business filings, yeah, and those businesses, yeah, they close the gap between what people. Um what 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 we get from people that live in the area and the cost for the city to provide services. Yeah, and and this particular one, yeah, is for residential only. Now, if those um if a house happens to have two children and then those two children go to the school, yeah. Where is that money coming from?
And that's one thing I've said in this, any topic like this, the spider web of interconnected. Factors that go into spreading all of this out appropriately and understanding the different. Impacts different decisions make is so complex and.
Yeah.
Um, you know, like for me, living, um going back to the TIF part of it. Okay, these businesses or these residential area or um real estate places are having TIFs in place that. Take money from the schools. Well, me not living in the city, but being in the school district.
Okay.
I can't participate in saying, hey, don't take that money from the schools, but yet it's my school district, but it's not my city.
It's not the city.
You know, so there's all these little nuances of 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 things that so anyway, it's 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 obviously not a simple thing. So I I applaud your effort to learn as much as you have and keep an open mind, as you said, and and try to wrap your head around all those, because it's it's so.
It 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 is fascinating. No, no, I I um uh I I happen to be kind of a geek when it comes to numbers. And this is right up my alley. Yeah, I've been the chairman of the finance committee and um and and again with. The the one thing that um I think does set Marysville apart is that we are one of the few. Where we have a one and a half percent income tax, because Dublin is two percent, the Hilliard is two and a half percent, Columbus is almost three percent. Yeah, and we're still at one and a half percent. Our real estate tax is modest. It may seem a lot for people, but if you compare it against others.
Right.
Yeah, our real estate tax is modest, so and and the one thing that um uh we we have always and every council that I've worked with. Yeah, they fortunately for me bought into the same philosophy. That we are responsible for the need that people have, we are not responsible for the want that people have. Yeah, so um and 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 uh and 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 that has always been, now, if you want more. Unfortunately, we may not have that. And then and even myself, if I um have my grandchildren. Um uh I will ask them in the winter time, hey, do you want to drive down to Dublin? Uh even use the Dublin rec center or uh they have um trampoline um places out there. Yeah, then it it's gonna take me fifteen, twenty minutes to get there, but there is no economic possibility to build that in Marysville.
And my my opinion and one of the reasons I decided to stay here in Marysville and not move somewhere else, among many reasons. Is I always felt it was the best of both worlds. I'm, I think from the center of town, my house is nine point nine miles north of town.
Okay.
So I can go out in the country and for now, anyway, be away from people and.
Yes.
Be where I like to be. Um I can drive fifteen, ten to twenty minutes, depending where in town I want to get to. And pretty much access most of what I need on a regular basis. And if I want anything else, it's just another twenty minutes down thirty three to get to it. So to me, it's the best of both all worlds.
Oh, of all.
I have a small community like Marysville I can be a part of. I feel like it's not being or it's becoming less of a small town. But I I could be in the country, be in a small town in Marysville and not deal with the traffic of sawmill or tuttle to go to all those amenities. So that's that's one of the things I've always loved about the the area is we're close enough to that stuff that it's not. You know, like somebody in Belle Fountain, they've got forty five minutes, or I know people in Ketten that if they want those kind of amenities, they have an hour to an hour and a half to get to those. So to me, I think we're in a pretty good spot for that. And so when I hear people say, we need all of those wants. No, well, then go move down, in my opinion. Well, then go move to a place that has those, don't. And and again, that goes back to, you know, you saying, well, one, you saying responsible for the needs, not the wants. Um and and obviously, there's lots of plans around the numbers and in planning for this and that and the the economics of it. Um, one place of curiosity for me, and I don't know enough of the story to really make um too much of a statement. But moving away from the mayoral form of government. And you know, sometimes I I've heard it said that we've we've got, you know, I don't know if you you follow the Marysville Matters Guide and he put out a.
Yes.
You know, his survey on the community's trust in different entities and and some of that lack in trust. And I've heard some of those challenges and I've heard people reference not being sure what the vision is for the community or. What the uh who we want to be when we grow up as a community, I think is a fun way of of putting it. But the the intangible side of the community and um you know, sometimes I get on a rant, if you look up uh community on Google. The first definition is basically people in the same place. The second definition is a feeling of fellowship and shared goals and interests and attitudes. And the second one to me is more of what I would like to be a part of. And to me, that falls into the small town category, which a lot of times. The development folks are saying, well, we can still be a small town. Well, no. We can't have a billion dollar investment from Amazon, a hundred million dollar water and light project. And all of the other things that are going on.
Yeah.
And stay the small town that we were, but we're only getting bigger. It's going to change. We can try to retain some of those attributes and characteristics that we've had. Um, so anyway, just uh it's got got me thinking, what is lacking that would help in maintaining the small town feel and? Um, the who is setting the vision for our community past streets and dollars? You know, from the the intangible side of things.
Um, well, ob- obviously, there is the um the. There are different uh studies being done where people are being interviewed. And then a lot of it depends on uh who has the loudest voice, yeah, of the of the general public, yeah. And um uh if it is somebody that um has uh younger children, they look for something different than. If it is somebody that is um uh past retirement and only needs to be a short period of time. So uh we 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 do look at all all those different studies. Um, but uh there are the traditionalists and they are also are are on council. And they look at especially historic Marysville. And when we're looking at historic Marysville, yeah, that goes from Grove Street to Cherry. And then from about where Memorial Hospital is until Third, yeah, that 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 big traditional area. And there are people that say that um if you um if if you, well, look at that. Um, we do see a bigger influx of rental homes rather than owner occupied. And almost any community or any point of our community that we go to. Yeah, and 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 again, no doubt that you have seen that, but you can drive past the house and you could say, oh, rental. Oh, owner occupied, rental, rental, owner occupied. It makes a difference if it is owner occupied. So there is a strong um voice and and multiple voices for stronger um zoning requirements. Yeah, I used to uh live in Green Pesters and it was kind of ironic. Uh I was on the board of the of Green Pesters, they have a homeowner association. And we would get a um a a weekly report and it would show thirty two violation. Violations in Green Pesters, which is four hundred and twenty homes. Yeah, not all built out yet, but say four hundred homes, there are twenty more empty spaces to build. So but we had thirty two violations and I would get um I would get a uh slip from the city. And we would have twelve violations for the whole city of Marysville. So we have a difference of opinion of what zoning should be.
Yeah, for sure.
And and then the enforcement of zoning, yeah, which again is much more cumbersome through government than through a homeowner association.
For sure.
Yeah, so um what what does the leadership want? Well, obviously, um there is going to continue to be a push and I certainly hope that there is going to be a push. Yeah, that um that that people that leave a lot of um inventory that they have skewed in their yard. Uh the weeds um sometimes can outgrow the grass, which is only allowed to be eight inches high. And sometimes twelve or eighteen inches high. So yes, there is, but again, that we 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 have limited staff. And it would require considerable staffing, yeah, and then again, um how it it is not always the most pleasant job. To tell somebody, yeah, because again, that that is a perception that everybody has.
For sure. Well, and then timely with the um. The old Salvation Army building.
Yes, well, that that.
And that.
Yeah, which which is currently in the news with regards to um uh not maintaining that particular building the way that it was intended to. Or it was promised at the time that they bought it.
You see, it says it's might be running out of space on the card. Well, it's good for now. Sorry.
Okay.
Want to make sure I don't run out of card. Probably getting close. We're at an hour and twenty minutes.
Okay.
Probably good to wrap up.
Okay.
It still says record. Um. So yeah, if you want, if we want to finish on the Salvation Army building and what else?
Not not only the Salvation Army building, yeah, but also um one one thing that we will. You'll you'll hear um within about a year, you you'll hear um that Marysville is looking to. Um inquire the appetite for uh a higher income tax, okay? And some of that comes out of the wish list that we talked about earlier. Um, so if you look at the things that give us a lot of pleasure, yeah, and one 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 is definitely the Marysville swimming pool. You could say it's not important, but it is important to the community. Yeah, it's got, you can safely send children, you can, I mean, it it it's a staple. Uh it has a uh it when they built it, it had a forty year. Well, the first time that they built it, yeah, was during the uh the work the workforce area that um. That was back in the.
After the depression.
After the depression, yeah, so that that's what built the pool, yeah. Now, the pool, after they redid the whole pool, it had a forty year life expectancy, it's now hitting its forty fifth year. Yeah, so maintenance continue to become an issue and we expect five more years out of the current pool. To repix it, it's gonna be five million dollars, okay? Um, and but then when we did ask a year and a half ago, how would you like the city to be? Yeah, we we had as many as seven hundred people that applied to it. And they would like to see a different kind of swimming pool, yeah, one with the lazy river, yeah, at the different locations. Yep, so.
Not as active as we used to be. Heaven forbid you just swim.
Well, and then, of course, it would have its own pool and it would be, it would be.
They are fun.
A big fun, big, big, fun, outdoorsy type thing, yeah. So in addition to that, the what we would like to do, uh if you're familiar with Mill Valley, we have the um the trail. And we would like to see the trail, yeah, finish up all the way up to Cherry and then up Cherry underneath thirty three to be able to tie in. With the new park that we have, Scott's Park, and then tying in with Scott's Farm. And then we have an almost uh ten mile loop that people can ride a bicycle.
That's awesome.
What that, if you can do it, okay? So in order to do that, that would require um a quarter percent increase in income tax.
Just for the trails?
Just just for the trails and the swimming pool.
I was gonna say in the pool, okay.
In the pool. So if people want it, do they have an appetite to pay for it? Okay, and the other part of it is, and we talked a little bit earlier about um paving, yeah, but um we also. Um, do see the need for more future um uh roundabouts, whether we like them or not. Uh we do see street maintenance, um yeah, so that would also be a quarter percent. So we would go in with two separate levees, each of them being a quarter percent for seven or ten years. Yeah, so that people at some point in time in the future can bow out and say, I'm not getting the value that I want, yeah, and.
Some end in sight.
Yeah, but then now it becomes a citizen's decision and it does not become a council decision. So people have asked council for amenities, council did that deliberation through administration and said. Yes, we can do what you would like us to. Now, are you willing to pay for it? Okay, and that's plain and simple.
I like it.
So.
Well, it's always good to get citizen input and um.
Oh, yes, it is.
Especially if they're gonna put their money where their mouth is. That's the uh kind of key to it all, right?
Yes, yeah, it is. It is ni- nice to 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 get it, yeah, but then uh in this particular case. Out of our current one and a half percent, we are able to take care of the needs and we can we can continue to do that for a long period of time. Just take care of the needs.
Demechanically, that's the idea, right, is that you have a percentage of real estate, property tax, sales or whatever. And as the community grows or shrinks, that percentage should grow and shrink proportionally.
Proportionally, yeah, whether whether you do, you need the same number of staffing, whether you need the same number of uh. Uh so you adjust your staffing and uh we, for the time being, will only see a increase in the growth of the population. But then we also do see additional businesses coming in, so uh no, I'm I'm very upbeat for. What is yet to come for the city of Marysville, yeah, so. But in the meantime, yeah, if people have the desire for other things, we are going to make them part of the solution as well.
I think that's great.
Yeah, we don't just want to say, you have to do what we tell you to, we listen to you, this is what you want. Yes, it can be done, but at this. Yes, it can be done, but at this, and and it's nothing different than if somebody that has a house but would like to add a sun porch to it. You go through a decision process, you don't just say, let's do that. Yeah, this this would be a big uh a big sun porch, but I mean, you're looking at um about a twenty million dollar investment to be paid up over a seven or ten year period. But um it it again, if if people can afford it, they'll vote for it, if they cannot afford it, it's not gonna happen. Yeah, but we cannot rely or we cannot automatically say, hey, big business, yeah, you you should pay this for us. That that would not be a a reasonable request, yeah, to to do that. It it has to be a citizen's decision.
For sure.
Yeah.
Again, very complicated thing and uh lots of decisions to make. So what what in your opinion, as as a longtime resident, longtime um leader, if you will, in city council, how do you, what what are your top suggestions for for the rest of us in in moving forward and participating in becoming whoever we're going to become when we grow up as a community? What are the best things we can be doing?
Well, of course, I'm 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 very much um in awe of our school system, yeah. Um not only for the educational part, yeah, but you saw it recently, um and and my daughter is in, actually, yeah, my my oldest granddaughter is in um in dance, she does competitive dancing. As a matter of fact, Saturday, we're going down to Columbus. Uh so I I certainly encourage the um the arts in different forms in the City of Marysville. I think that enhances the pride of the community. Uh we're doing well in sports, we integrate now especially in uh we in in women's wrestling. Yeah, we we're coming to the top tier, yeah, so look for the available opportunities, yeah. And the other thing of it is, uh in order to meet with other people and say, I feel that I'm not making the connection, that's something that you should be looking at your church, you should be looking at what can you as an individual contribute to be part of the community.
Be of service.
Yeah, it has to be a two-way street, it cannot be an automatic, okay, uh I'm standing here and nobody comes up to me. You have to go out, we make those um Friday night uptown Marysville available to meet other people. Hopefully, you can do it in your own community, uh that you could maybe do um do a community picnic or do something where as a community, even if you have a volunteer group and say, hey, there are ten or fifteen of us and we'll take, every other Saturday or once a month, we go and we will clean up a certain area in our neighborhood, yeah, but do it collectively. That's going to make you not only proud of your own community, but it gives you the opportunity to meet other people. It it has to be a two-way street, it's not that people automatically come to you.
Agreed, going back to that definition of community, that second one of a feeling of fellowship and shared interests, goals and attributes, you know? So interest in having a pride in your community and cleaning up or whatever it might be.
Whatever it might be, yeah.
Having that fellowship of being in community and and helping each other out. That that's always my my opinion is get engaged, and so I would agree with that. It's uh, you know, culturally, we 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 could use it.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah, but um definitely um I I I do have to applaud all the efforts that we are putting into, especially our young people, yeah, whether it be through the Avalon, whether it be through um the dance competitions that we have at the higher, at the high school level. And I certainly hope that um our young people have the capability, well, they seem to have the capability to take advantage of that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and when it comes down to monotity a bit, when it comes down to uh pay to play, um um there are there are grants available through the United County Foundation.
I heard that recently.
And specifically, yeah, if there if there are some that have the potential, yeah, that and I I would ask the coaches to look into that and say, there is, there are ways to help young people. Yeah, so uh that's another thing that uh I think that as a community, yeah, just having finished up the uh the Care Train, um which which is which is a major one, and seeing other things, how the community is willing to support um the commu- community at large, and that that's that's very striking to me.
Very important, that that again.
Make that community.
Yep, yep, builds that sense of community. Well, thank you so much for coming to chat with me and.
Okay.
It's probably good to wrap up unless you've got anything else, I think we're at time.
Nope, I I I can only say that Marysville has its best years out of it yet, so, yes.
Onward and upward. I like it. Well, thanks for hanging out, guys. Uh if there's anything you wanna talk about, come in and share the cha- uh table with me, and until then, take care.
Well, I just realized that my audio recorder back here ran out of space. It said it had plenty of space, like three hours, but it ran out at some point, it looked like, so I just wanna jump on here and say thank you. Thanks to Hank for joining me. Hopefully, you guys found some good information there, he is a wealth of knowledge, been doing this for a long time, been involved in the community, as he said, for about fifty years, been on council for, what'd he say? This is his sixteenth year or so, wealth of knowledge. You ever see him out? He's uh he likes to talk, so he's a good conversationalist. Reach out and say hi if you have any questions. Um as for me, if there's anything I can do with your real estate needs, that's my day job. Uh if you'd like to come join me here on the podcast and chat about anything real estate related, the community related, whatever, I'd love to have you. So until then, go be part of the good stuff going on in the community, take care.